Well, that's what I had to do over here with Ed. Okay, we don't need to wait on Dr. Curly, so we can just go ahead. Uh, yeah, we'll do that when we get to. Ready to pray. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the April 1st meeting, April Fool's Day. We'll see you. This is not really a meeting, we're going home. Welcome to the April 1st meeting of the Gastonia City Council. And I'd like to ask Mayor Pro Tem Brenda Craig to open the meeting with prayer, after which, please stand, if you would, for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Thank you.
That's Craig.
Let us pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for looking over us, watching us, guiding us, loving us. Be with us tonight as we do the business of the citizens of Gastonia. Keep us close to you, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Let's have the approval of the adoption of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, Adam D. is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, March 4th. Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you. Adam E., Councilman Gallagher, Chairman of the Awards, Ceremonies and Promotions Committee, the Proclamation of the National Crime Victims Rights Week, which will be April 6th through the 12th next week. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to invite up here Detective Gollman and Kathy Kloniger to the shelter of Gaston County. Ladies, thank you. And... Let me read this proclamation. Whereas, millions of Americans are victims of crime each year, and these crimes also affect family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers. And whereas crime can leave a lasting physical, emotional, and financial impact on people of all ages and abilities, of all economic, racial, and social backgrounds. It's true, crime, you feel very vitilated when someone breaks into your home and things are missing. I've had that happen in our house. And it's, it takes a toll on you emotionally and everything else. Whereas, in 1984, the Crime Victims Fund was established by the Victims of Crime, of the Victims of Crime Act, VOCA, to provide permanent source of support for crime victim services and compensation through fines and penalties paid by convicted federal offenders. Now, there's justice. Whereas, by ensuring that federal offenders' criminal fines and penalties are deposited into the Crime Victims Fund, Congress affirmed that those who commit crimes should be held accountable for the impact of their actions. And whereas, the Crime Victims Fund today supports thousands of victims assistance programs that provide help and support to children, child victims of violence and sexual abuse, stalking victims, survivors of homicide victims, victims of drunk-driving crashes, and victims of domestic dating and sexual violence and other crimes. And whereas, the National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 6th through the 12th, 2014, provides an opportunity to celebrate the energy, creativity, and commitment that launched the Victims Rights Movement, inspired its progress, and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of Gastonia do hereby proclaim the week, April 6th through the 12th, 2014, as National Crime Victims Week, Rights Week, and in honor crime victims and those who serve them during this week and throughout the year. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Gastonia to be affixed this day, this first day of April, 2014, in the year of our Lord. And I just want to say, ladies, if you'd like to speak to this, one of you take it Detective or Kathy, it's up to you.
Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Detective Nanette Gollman. I am currently the Victim Witness Coordinator for the Gastonia Police Department. And we, last year, implemented the Victim Rights Program with the Gastonia Police Department. And I could truly say that this is something that is near and dear to my heart. I think people have the right to live freely without any harm or danger or violence toward anyone. So, on behalf of the City of Gastonia, the Gastonia Police Department, and victims of every crime level, I truly indeed accept this prestigious award. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I also would like to thank this, take this opportunity here tonight to thank you all for recognizing this upcoming week in our community. This is a time not only to honor survivors, but to remember those who have lost their lives to senseless crimes here in our community. With the theme of National Crime Victims Week, new challenges and new solutions, just imagine what it means for all of us. Imagine losing a daughter, a son, a friend, coworker, an aunt, an uncle, or reading about that loss in the newspaper or even on television. So, this violence surrounds us every day. Today, we must never forget, and we must all be an advocate for someone, to imagine to the families who have lost someone, and also to give them hope, and also for the victims who have lost the hope, as well as their identity, and who also have lost themselves. And every day, each year, lives have been changed forever by crime, injuries, and also death. As a domestic violence advocate for the past 30 years, I ask you to always keep domestic violence in your forefront, and just as you should keep any form of violence in your forefront. It's time that we all continue to reach out to crime victims, to listen to what they need, to help them to rebuild their lives. And we may ask ourselves, do you know someone who has been affected by a criminal act? And I do. And thank you so very much for this recognition this evening.
A little second then. Motion and a second. Discussion, all in favor? Okay, Nanette and Kathy, thank you both for what you do and what your group does and what you've done for years, and we're so fortunate to have you. And someone else fortunate to have you, is this little tiny guy back here, would you introduce him? Half of it?
I'd like to introduce our sheriff and also my husband.
Okay.
Who is a really strong supporter.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And also, I really also want to take the opportunity to really thank Gastonia City Police Department as well. They do an awesome job as far as supporting our shelter and supporting us in the work that we do. And so, it's wonderful to have that partnership and relationship, and also with the sheriff's office as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Your Honor, I'd also like to include the Gaston County Police, with which our city police has a close working relationship within that, at ambit of prevention. I think that although they're not, they don't have a representative here tonight, they're on the front lines as well. We need to recognize them. Thank you.
All right, sir, thank you. Okay, item F is public expression, there's nothing signed up. Adam, under the consent agenda, are there any questions or any comments? Yes, sir.
On item number four, Your Honor, Ed, I think maybe for you or our legal counsel, I've looked over the documentation and also the memorandum from Melanie. Couple of questions here. Is there a potential impact to this agreement with regard to the upcoming rebound?
No, because it has a cap.
Okay.
You know, if we didn't have a cap on there, I would be quite concerned, but the cap goes for seven years. It's almost, if you notice, it starts 2013, so we're almost six years or so. So, the cap, the amount of money we're going to pay is $128,200, no matter what the value is.
Well, it's not to exceed, correct?
Correct.
It could be less. And then, what would be, what, so in other words, there's not a quick way that this would be reopened if those numbers didn't come in?
No, our plan is that this goes on until the termination, which is June 30th, 2020.
Thank you. Do I have, sir? Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item seven is the regular agenda, public hearing, Economic Development Agreement for Project Matthias. Is that correct? Matthias. Presentations is Kristi Chris, Business Service Manager. And I would rule the public hearing be open.
Mayor, if I could, real quickly, before we start on our regular agenda, make a motion to approve Councilman Kimball, who is, I mean, Councilman Curly, who is out of town.
I will second.
Prove him being out of town? Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Sorry, Kristi.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I have the pleasure this evening of letting you know that we have a new industry that will be moving into the Gastonia Technology Park. Project Matthias has visited us about a year and a half ago, and we made the final cut. They've chosen to locate here in Gastonia. They are a German company. They make carbide cutting tools, small family-owned company. They are planning on locating at the corner of Repi Court and Gastonia Technology Parkway on approximately about three acres. About a $2 million initial investment, and starting out with four employees, but with the possibility of expansion. We have proposed our standard incentive package for them, which is our Economic Development Tax Investment Grant, and then also waiving the system expansion fees. Those are the one-time fees for the water and sewer that has been standard with companies in the Technology Park. And at this time, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Questions? Yes, sir.
Kristi, I just have one question, and that is, recently, Chiquita Banana moved to Charlotte, and they were just taken over by another firm in Europe, and they may be leaving Charlotte. So, under their agreement, if they left, they would have to pay back what the city had originally invested with them. Do we have that same thing within this contract?
I believe so. I'm gonna ask Melissa.
No, they're actually in these, in these tax incentive agreements, there are no clawback provisions. So, they get the tax break for the year that they're in operation, and then the next year, obviously, they don't continue to get the, if they go out of business, they don't continue to get the tax breaks, but they do get the tax, not the tax breaks, I'm sorry, the investment grant for the, for the years that they're in operation. But they do, we do not have clawback provisions.
And I will add, the way that the grant is set up, that they do have to pay the taxes for that year before receiving that portion back to them. So, it's on a year-by-year basis. They do have to pay the taxes first, then they receive the grant for that appropriate amount.
Thank you.
Questions? Any others? Move here without, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you very much. Done. Thank you. Yes, sir.
But you know, the voice of Gastonia, we get these notices to...
Yeah, I know who it is.
She's the voice of Gastonia.
That's right.
Does a good job, too, I think.
It's a great job. The, before, yeah, come on up, Rusty. It's next, but I have to do it, you'll find, when you get older, you have, and I really have my calendar mixed up. And thank you, Melissa McGee, for being here. I know in our session of the work session, we had a moment of remembrance for Ash Smith's mother. And I wanted to say that we still are remembering him very much so. And we've all talked to him, I'm sure, and she passed away a couple, well, a week and a half ago. And it's so, meeting-wise, I don't remember what we did and didn't do, but we can say it again if we want to. And so, but we certainly want to remember he, him. He's with his dead. She was 72 years old, too young, but we don't have a say in that. But he is where he's supposed to be. Okay, Rusty, regular agenda, item seven, excuse me, item eight is a resolution authorizing condemnation proceedings, Tittman Road Geo Bon Widening. Rusty Boss, Director of Engineering.
I want to say go Clemson.
No, we're not talking Clemson.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. The very first thing I have in my notes with these condemnation things is to tell you that since the time that we wrote this memo, that we've been able to resolve some things with some of these folks.
Great.
And we removed some. Unfortunately, this is the one instance where the folks that we're dealing with on these properties are just moving very slowly. They have a lot of procedures, processes that they have to go through. And so, the list hasn't changed. This will be the list that we put up for the resolution this evening. I'd hope to knock some of these down, just for the processes in play that didn't happen. Real briefly, Tittman Road, we're widening it from two lanes to three lanes. It currently has, you know, side ditches and grass right up to the pavement. We're gonna be putting curb and gutter, sidewalks, and planter strips down, and making it three lanes. This is the entire length from New Hope to Lowell, Bethesda. Construction plans are being completed, and right-of-way acquisition is the next phase in that. We've been doing that since about November of last year. So, we've been at it for probably three or four good months here. There's a total of 57 parcels that we've been in contact with folks on. We've resolved the majority of them. There are just six property owners here that account for eight properties that we haven't had resolved. Of course, if council chooses to pass this resolution, that doesn't mean we're gonna stop working with these folks. The majority of these are big entities or heirs of, where it's really a matter of coordination of getting all of the paperwork through everybody, all the people's right hands. The situation we're in, though, is we want to move this project forward. And this was the deadline that we had established, and we really want to keep moving at it. So, we want to go ahead with the resolution at the same time that we're still working with these folks to get these signatures resolved. We feel confident that five of these will probably get signatures on. The Robert Blackman and Laverne Blackman are the ones that we're having most of the time, trying to figure out where they're at, why they're going, and what we need to do to get them where they need to be. They have their reasons. They've reversed course on us twice now. They weren't going to sign, and they were going to sign, now they're not going to sign. So, we continue that engagement with those folks, try and make sure we get a good handle on what their issue is and get it resolved. But other than that, council recommends passing the resolution. I'll be glad to try and answer your questions.
Questions, Rusty?
Yes, sir.
Rusty, so from your narrative, it indicates that we have been able to get service to all these people. Because sometimes it's, that can be a real disconnect. You don't have the lawful service, therefore, it elongates the process.
That was one of the issues with the heirs of the Loftus family. It took us a little bit of time to find the actual, I guess they call it personal representative now, that estate, the person in charge of, but we have touched base with the actual individuals on every parcel.
Great.
And we've made contact and made offers to each one of them.
Good, thank you, sir.
Rusty, what seems to be the big sticking point, that they're gonna lose land?
I think the Blackmans are, I think they're not sure what they want. I think that's it. We've explained it to them a couple of times, and we've had it staked and met with them on site, you know, pointed out curb and gutter, sidewalk, your driveway. You know, we've gone through everything with them physically to their property. I think they understand that. I just think that they're not certain what they want. I don't think it's a monetary value. This is a real hard one for us to get a good handle on what's going on.
What about the churches?
The churches are all in agreement with it. They just have their own bureaucracy that things have to go through.
Understand that.
So, the two churches, their headquarters are in other places, and they're going through their attorneys.
Rusty, on 199, the Blackman is, they're the, you know, you start at New Hope Road, and you go down on the left side until you get way down to the three on the end. They're the only ones, and I'm sure they're very aware of that, are they not? You know, they're on either side of them, and all the way up and down through there. And it looks like theirs is, actually, they've got a larger piece of property than either side of them and other side.
And on their property, we're actually not acquiring any right-of-way. We're just acquiring utility easements for the overhead lines.
Okay.
So, it's, again, that's one of those ones where we're just having a little conversation and getting them to sort of understand and tell us what their issue is.
Questions? Yes, ma'am?
Condemnation is not something that I have a strong feeling for, okay? And most of the time, nine times out of 10, I vote against it. But I do understand that there are times when condemnation is needed and necessary to move a project, a street project, road project, forward. And so, as much as I don't particularly care for condemnation, and I hope that we're able to get it all taken care of before we have to go to the final part of it, I would make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Just want to say that Tittman Road is a real dangerous road, the way it is right now, and I think this is just gonna be a great improvement for it. And you're right, Councilwoman Craig, I concur with you exactly. I don't like to do condemnation, but this is just gonna make an improvement for everyone that lives there.
All in favor? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
In case I didn't close the hearing of Christie's, I thought, I think I did.
Technically, when you have the vote, the vote on the actual matter that's being considered, that closes the public.
That closes it. That's good to know. All right.
Ask the same question?
Okay, item nine is the Utilities Committee Meeting Report, Councilman McAdier.
I'm gonna turn it over, Ed.
All right, they'll be exhibited. I knew you was gonna do this.
Well, that's right.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, this is the Utilities Committee Report on Monday, March 24th, 2014. And the first item, which was the major item there, dealt with the discussion of the water and sewer system expansion fees. And you can see that the committee's action was to vote 3-0 to table the item until the next Utilities Committee meeting, so the staff could provide further information on the financial impacts. And essentially, one of the options it will be looking at is if the city's expansion fee could be reduced to 20% with an increase in 2016 to 75%, and then another increase in 2017. There's also another option, the same percentages above, but two and a half years of a grandfather period of time. That first option is a five-year period. And when you look at the background information, the staff presented that information to the committee. What was explained was the history of this, and when the city council adopted these fees. There was a lawsuit. The lawsuit then was settled, and the fees were supposed to go in at a layered approach. Right now, we have 60% of the, what we charge today is 60% of the fees that were approved by the city council back when the program was initially started in 2010. What the staff was proposing, because the building community had requested some relief, was to draw that back to 40% and to have that operate for a period of time, then go back to the, a schedule where you would go to the original fees. I might say that had we stayed on the regular schedule, we would already, the last two years, we've not, this city council has not increased them at all. We've kept them at 60, even though we could have increased them. Because I think we are all aware that the development community is trying to dig out from the recession. So, we are trying to work with the development community, and these options that the committee was recommending just is, are some variations. And I think there'll be a good discussion at our next meeting, and then potentially with that recommendation back to the full city council. The other items dealt with updates. One was the e-waste program, and this is where we are going forward to get a, potentially, a grant. This is for solid waste. Right now, if you, if you put on the curb a television, old television set or something like that, we won't pick it up. It'll just sit there. Well, that's not, you can't do that. So, we have to pick it up anyway. And then the question is, where does this go? The landfill will not accept them. They have to go into special areas. So, what we've, what we're setting up is a system where we can contract with an entity to be able to deal with our e-waste. And since Linda's here, she may want to talk about that later. The water treatment plant update, Matt Bernhardt was there and gave a briefing on that. We are very much working on the, that, currently, the, we are looking at, and we've interviewed firms for the construction manager at risk for the water plant. Then there's the update for the sanitary sewer to the town of Stanley. And again, this was provided information, we're moving forward on that project. And then also the electric substation. Matt Bernhardt and Paul Jakubzak are here to give any specific information if the council wants to hear more about those. And that's the report.
Questions, Mr. Mudd? Matt? Thank you, sir. Item 10, Ed, is amendment to the Advocacy Agenda.
Regarding the motion, you can, motion to accept the report.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
I just want to say thank you for adding the moped in there.
Okay, item 10, Ed.
Yeah, item 10 is the amendment to the 2014 Advocacy Agenda. And as you can see from the last version that we had at our last city council meeting, we added two items at the end. One deals with the mopeds, and the other one deals with an item that was provided really from the city attorney's office. And it had directly, there was a case, Wind versus City of Gastonia, and there's some specific situations there. And I think if you have further questions, Melissa will be able to answer that. But I attached also a little blog that was done by someone from the school of government, where they talked about some of the history of the mopeds and some of the pending or potential legislation. And as you can see, the state's trying to get their arms around it. And so, what we'll do is lend our support to trying to provide more, more structure and particularly in terms of insurance, and particularly in terms of registration of mopeds. But there was even a, whether or not people can have more than one person on a moped, how old do you have to be, there's a number of regulations involved.
Yes, sir.
Just one question is for Melissa. On the personnel issue here, is there some type of law for like whistleblowers on the books at all? Because that's what this pertains to, someone blowing the whistle, bringing to attention so they don't get any kind of retribution back on them?
There are federal whistleblower statutes, and honestly, I'm not exactly sure if there are state whistleblower statutes. I would have to look into that to see exactly what statutes would apply. But with regard to this particular issue, because it was, because it was in his personnel file that he did have the right, and it was not... that he did have the right, and it was not protected by, basically, and most whistleblower statutes protect you from retaliation, they don't necessarily protect you from the release of your name, so.
So ameninity is not there with whistleblower status. So this provides the ameninity where, for example, if a citizen's been, thinking he's being tailgated by a police officer and complains to his superiors, that doesn't, that name doesn't get out there.
Right, or if another employee.
See someone like, throw solid waste or in an area that's not to be thrown and someone complains to the superior.
Right, this would, this would mean, under the current, under this court, under this court case, that name would have to be released. If we knew it, it would have to be released if, if it was the basis of a personnel action. And the court defined pretty much anything as a personnel action. So, uh, that's why, but that could be changed by legislative action, and so that's why that, that request is here.
So that, yeah, because, all right.
And, and I will say that in the lawsuit, there were a lot of amicus briefs, which are basically friend of the court briefs that other groups file on to show that they support your position. And a lot of, like the Sheriff's Association and a lot of different groups like that filed amicus briefs on behalf of the city, but the court did, ended up holding that as long as it was part of the personnel file, it had to be released.
Thank you.
So, if the council could, uh, if there's any further questions on this advocacy agenda, we can approve it this evening if you'd like. Now, we can always amend it. And as time goes on, I mean, any, any time, any council meeting, if there's an issue that's before the state, for the, uh, because I don't think that this is necessarily comprehensive. In fact, I think it's probably too long. If we went and actually sat down with our legislators, you would want to really, probably have no more than four bullet points. Uh, this is just, uh, there, there are some issues that deal with the Shule Museum very specifically, with the ABC system very specifically. Uh, but, uh, if the council is, is, feels comfortable with it, we could approve it tonight, and then again amend it as, as we go through the rest of the year.
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Any, any more discussion? Yes, sir.
For legal counsel, uh, councillor, I, I think I need to recuse myself from this. I'm a member of the Fraternal Order of Police, and I believe they were involved in this litigation. So I'm going to recuse myself from this vote.
I move out, uh, Councilman Kimball to be excused.
Second. Okay, all in favor of your motion? Okay, you're excused. Okay, um, there is a motion and a second to approve. Any other questions? All in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you very much. Um, Melissa, is anything that comes in, turns off?
I do have, um, one short item. We have a fairly small quote, code enforcement lawsuit pending, um, basically against a structure that's in violation of the minimum housing code. Uh, during the course of this, it's air, it's what we call heirs property. There are a million different heirs. Um, but we determined halfway through the lawsuit that two of the heirs, one was actually a minor and one was, had been declared incompetent. And when, when you find that out, you have to have a guardian ad litem appointed. You have to go through a lot of processes. Well, I've been working with the guardian ad litem, um, because, because of the status of these two heirs. The rest of the, none of the rest of the heirs have actually answered, or, so we'll be able to get a default judgment against them. But the guardian ad litem has requested, in the case of these two particular defendants' heirs, that we would agree, um, under the statute, if we do end up demolishing the house, we can either collect it, we get a lien on the property that is actually, that we actually demolish, and technically, we act, get a lien against any other real property owned by the defendants. And the guardian ad litem has no problem with us getting a lien against the property that we may end up demolishing, but it's just asked that we, that the city agreed that we will not, that we will release the lien that we would otherwise get against any other property that these two particular defendants own. And he assures me they don't own any property and are never likely to own any property because of their condition, but.
Okay.
So I would need your approval to do that.
We have a motion on that.
I don't have a problem with that. I'll, I'll make the motion to approve that.
Is there a second?
Second, here.
Any discussion on that?
And it's, it's just for those two defendants?
Yes, those two.
Okay, and, and a lien would, a lien could still go on the real property, like the city could take the actual land if necessary.
Yes, the, the property we demolished.
That's, I'm fine with that.
Yes, ma'am.
What age are these? Are they?
Honestly, the, the minor is 16, but, but she is also autistic, and so she, when she, when you're, you cannot have a minor declared incompetent, so right now she's a minor, and when she becomes an adult, she will probably not, she will probably declare incompetent. I'm not sure how old the, they're, they're brother and sister, so.
Okay, any others?
I, I just, I'm not going to declare her.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Thank you, unanimous opposed. Um, anything else?
No.
City managers report, Ed.
I have, have something to pass out here that, that I actually just received at 5:13 today. So I'll pass that out. While, while I'm doing that, uh, also wanted to report to the city council that last week I attended a meeting in Raleigh with Richard Rankin and Greg Hamburg from Art Space. Uh, we met with Bob Kukab, who is the director of the State Housing Finance Agency, and we talked about funding for the Art Space project. One of the things that we did discuss is that, that the, the location has not been finally fixed, uh, but we talked about the project. Uh, the state was very supportive and interested in it, but they also told us how very competitive things are, and that everybody has to get a perfect score. Uh, they said that the system is so, so established that everybody gets a perfect site. And so then, the only thing that's different is the financing and management, and that gets to be the, the decision-making. Uh, there are three or four times as many projects as qualify, and actually qualify with very good ratings that, that are submitted versus those that get funded. Uh, but it was a good meeting. Uh, they, you know, we, you know, was, again, you know, represented the city. The, uh, the community foundation was Richard Rankin, and then the, uh, Mr. Hamburg flew down from Minneapolis. So, uh, they're working that process. Uh, we did discuss a little bit about the arts requirement, the artist requirement. They don't have a specific requirement in North Carolina, not likely to ever do a specific thing that says artists. They have done something similar in Asheville, not with Art Space, but where they set it up with art studios and that, and that ended up being populated by artists. So what they do is, in, in the design of it, if it is done that way, then the regulations are, allow for them to be able to be, uh, non-discriminatory, but yet targeting a, a certain group of folks. So, uh, there'll be a full report, and we're going to have to get back into the site selection at a later meeting. But I just did want to report to you that we had that meeting. And also next week, I have an interesting meeting. I think Matt Bernhardt and Rusty and, and Ed Cross and Flip and I are going up to, we've been invited to go see the coal ash, uh, at, at, at Riverbend. Uh, Duke wants to, wants us to see it, wants to be able to talk to us about what they're doing to safeguard uh, that, that, that particular location. Of course, uh, you know, that's our water source, uh, and Charlotte's water source. Uh, so we are going to go up there and we'll give you a full report of that. But again, we, they have told us and talked to us about using that coal ash at the airport. Seems like a good idea. Uh, it's a way to get that away from the lake. I think the longer it sits up there at the lake, you have the potential. Because not only did we have the, the problem at the Haw River, but now down near Wilmington. So, you know, it's better to, to remove it, we, we think. So we'll give you a full report on that. And what I passed out was something that Hank Graham sent me at 5:13 today. So we just received, maybe this is an April Fool's joke. And by the way, I did, I did consider putting something on the agendas in April Fool's, but I thought, you know, that might backfire, so I, maybe that.
I wasn't expecting this until May.
Yeah, this is the initial data, as you see, and approximately 1,300 highway projects. And, and potentially, you know, there could be errors found, and there might be a little bit adjustment. But I think we should turn that page and look at what, what they're saying. Is that US, that I-85 and 321 is the top project, and widening 85 to 321 comes in second. So now, you know, remember, we said we didn't want them stopping at 321. Well, that's where they're going to do it anyway. They're going to send that, they're going to widen it and put it there. And we're also going to be doing that inter, interchange, but that interchange can't possibly work if you widen it. So there's going to have to be a little conversation. Now, one is coming soon and one is coming later, but that's, that, that first bullet point. The MPO projects appear to be the highest scoring project and prioritization project. The top 77 projects out of 339 in the statewide tier are MPO or urban projects. Uh, there are $27.8 billion worth of statewide, statewide tier project, almost five times the amount uh, that, that's, that's available. The, number four is interesting. The capital area MPO has six of the top 10 statewide and division tier projects. And every time I go to Raleigh, every time I go to Cary, I see all those roads. And every time I talk to those people, they seem so interested in their own situation and so unfamiliar with what's going on in this part of the state. That's editorial, and I probably shouldn't say that, but it just does seem like, once again, Raleigh gets most of the projects there. Okay, uh, this, this, uh, the number five talks about Shelby. Garden Parkway is the number 175th project at the statewide tier, just below midpoint. So it means it probably will not get funded. So, you know, that, a major significant change from what we've had before. Uh, Shelby bypass probably not get funded either. Uh, the four phases are grouped together, and what, number 110 to 113 at state tier, they're top third. But the Shelby bypass got a higher rating than, than the Garden Parkway. And, and so, uh, that, that's significant, too. Uh, then the, the last item, uh, our MPO has two of the top 100 projects at the division tier, which is I-85 widening and US 321. And of course, this is the new system that is completely objective, and there's no politics involved, and here we are. So there's a lot of information attached to this. I'll, I'll send the complete report to the city, to all of you, so you can open it up. I tried opening it up, and it looked like it was going to take a long time to open up. And, uh, there may be, uh, I think Councilman Kimball went to the MPO. Was, was this discussed, or?
Actually, I was going to kind of touch, I didn't know we were going to get these. So I, I had that on my, uh, my council report list for, for this evening, and, uh, showing my, Councilman Pierceall was there as well. Um, I, I did ask, uh, Representative Baumgartner was in attendance, and I did ask him regarding the widening, which we've all talked about, of I-85 north to Cox Road. And, um, he had indicated that that would be a contained project or contained upgrade within the I-85 widening, is, is how he foresaw that. So I, I think that's positive, uh, positive news for us. Um, also, there was, at, at the last minute, I, there was a brief filed by the Southern Environmental Law Center. Um, they, it was really right before the last hour of the cutoff. So no one really at the MPO had, had read all the documents yet, but they will be reading those to see what, if any, impact there is on the plan and, uh, what, and also what, what appropriate comment could be made. And I, I did get all those documents back to, uh, Dr. Curlin before he left. I, I dropped them off, so he's, really has, uh, all the updates before he, before he left town. Todd, I don't know, is there anything else? I think that was, I think that's, uh, that was the only other thing that they're going to be looking at. I thought we had a presentation of the, uh, what'd you call it, the staged on-ramps where there's actually a.
Metering.
Metering of the on-ramps with a, with a traffic signal. So there's a break in the traffic during peak hours, used in a lot of cities. We saw some videos, uh, in, in Kansas City, Denver, some other places. Think it, it could have a use. They're gonna, there's funding for a study in the Charlotte area on that. I, I don't recall how many, I think it was about 20 some, Todd, they were looking at, 20 different, uh, ramps they were going to look at. And that's, that's all I have for the MPO.
Now, I'll, I'll say one thing about ramps like that, that, that are in Los Angeles and other places. You, because they'll take you to a dead stop sometimes, because you have to wait until the next light, or you're just creeping, then you do need to have enough room to, 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 to move. So some, some will work, some may need to be, you have to have enough room to actually get on the, the interstate. And, and we're not used to it here. It's going to be.
I, I actually discussed that with the presenter, that a lot of the success of those metered on-ramps depends on how long your acceleration lane is. And typically, what we saw in, in the demonstrations is they were purpose-built on-ramps with long acceleration lanes to accommodate that. I mean, I can think of some in our area that even when you're kind of rolling ahead, it's still a little bit of a chore to get out the, the traffic speed. Uh, thinking about I-85 north at, at North New Hope is a, is a real challenge there with a short ramp. So I did make, I did make that gentleman aware of that. That was a concern that we had in our area. And, uh, but it's part, it's going to be part of the study. But you're, you're absolutely correct. Acceleration lanes, we want. Thank you.
Uh, the, the next thing I'm passing around is we, we need to establish two, uh, two times to have budget meetings. And, uh, Councilman Kimball and Councilman Curlin both gave me a list of, of the, the dates that they would be out of, out of town or, or not available. And I actually Xed those, with just those two councilmen, I put X's on those dates. And so we also have city council meetings, two of them, and a holiday, which is Memorial Day. So.
These X's are the ones that are eliminated?
Well, there, there is a conflict with, with either Councilman Curlin or Councilman Kimball. Now, so, and I know Councilman Pierceall told me that there's a whole week at least.
12 through the 16th.
12 through the 15th. Well, as you, as you can see now, our X's are, are dominating here.
May I make a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
That, uh, I think we ought to have these meetings in the daytime. Because everybody's fresh. You have a meeting, start talking about a budget at 5:30, 6 o'clock. People are tired, staff's tired. Yeah, I think we ought to have them in the morning. At work, you just make arrangements to be here. Most of us can.
Well, I appreciate that, but I do work and so does Dr. Curlin.
Well, that's fine, but you do make arrangements.
I know you're retired.
You just make arrangements to be here. You can get off all the time anyway.
Sir, that's not the truth.
Well, anyway, I think that we ought to, that Sarah was talking about, we need to have the meetings during the day. That's my opinion. We can have a vote on that.
Okay, Ed, uh, one thing that, well, I had on there, you, you've added the, well, you got the holiday and you got the city council, but I, I also think we ought to mark out the, uh, May the 8th is the electric cities is going to be right here.
Oh, that's right.
The conference on it.
We have an X on 8 anyway, so.
There's X there for somebody, for someone, yeah. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
We need to schedule two in May?
Two. Councilman Kimball's, uh, one conflict is on the 14th, is with a COG meeting. And, uh, that, uh, that, you know, that, that's, you know, I'll let you.
Well, the, one of the issues that we wrestled with is the first one of the year was canceled because of the, the big snowstorm. So theoretically, this, this COG meeting, and, um, Councilman Gallagher is the, is the alternate to me at the COG meetings. That's really, uh, beginning of the year to May. That's, that's somewhat of an onerous meeting. Did not want to miss that, but I, I did speak with, um, Ed, and if, in fact, that worked for everybody else in the evening, I, I, I'm sure that we could send, um, someone from the city to attend that meeting, although they would not be, they would not be voting there.
What about the 13th?
Let me just.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
You know, it, we just need, any of these dates work for me, fine. But going back to what Councilman, uh, uh, McIntyre was talking about, refresh my memory, did we used to have council meetings and, and budget meetings during the day years ago?
Yes.
Yes.
Do I remember that? Okay.
Right here.
And, yeah, and was there a particular reason why we changed it to, to not?
As, as I recall, when we moved the council meetings, the council meetings we did for the public and also for some of the working members of the council.
Um, well, I know that, that we have, we started doing some for, so that more citizens could come and have input. But really, we ha, we don't get citizens at the night meetings that I've been in, okay?
We have board of adjustment meetings during the day, we have planning commission meetings at night. You know, it, e, each board, I mean, we, we discuss these things, uh, whatever works best for the, you know, board at the time.
I mean, you know, I, I understand, I understand everybody's working situation, uh, and you have to, you have to go to work. But could we maybe do one in May that was during the day and the other one in the evening? And would give you some plenty of time to get a vacation day or a sick day or a personal day or whatever that is, and just try it and see how it works and go from there? I mean, is that an option?
Whatever I want.
In the-
Cause I agree with that.
But in the seventies, all the council meetings were in the morning.
That's right. I mean, and I remember, I mean, I know that, that you're fresher in the morning.
Sure.
I, I agree with that. A lot of times, you know, especially the ones of us that do work, uh, you come at five-thirty and you're just dragging sometimes and you're not as sharp as you need to be. And personally, I think the budget is one of the most important things that we do. So I would offer maybe a suggestion of having one during the day and one in the evening, if that would work.
Brenda, I know for myself, I wouldn't be able to make the daytime.
Well, then I think that's, just has to be a choice. I mean, I, I don't-
Right.
I mean, you know, I, I don't, I think it's a choice for all of us, what we can attend and what we can't attend.
Well, it looks like, looking at the calendar, that, uh, that the thir, the thirteenth and maybe twenty-first, which is after a council meeting, thirteenth's not, thirteenth just sort of jumps out at me as being, uh, one of those, Brenda.
Yeah.
Um, without the X's, uh, I don't, I don't, I don't, I won't come up here on Friday and Saturday and Sunday. So that rules that out.
Right.
Uh, for me, but, uh, the twenty-first and the thirteenth, I mean, I'm just throwing that out to get us off dead center. There are no X's there.
Fine, I'm, I'm good those days.
Are you okay?
Twenty-first works for me, but I will be out of town on the thirteenth. The twelfth through the seventeenth's when I'm in DC. But if you guys need to meet those dates and everybody else can do it-
We hadn't put down Councilman Pierceall's X's yet.
Yeah. I was gonna say, if that's the only day that everybody else can meet, please don't do it on my count, but.
The twenty-first, would that be the daytime meeting?
Well, there's the sixteenth, will you be back on the sixteenth?
I won't be back to the seventeenth, I fly in on the seventeenth. Yeah, I'll be gone that entire week. So that's why I say, if that's, if one of those days is the only time everybody else can do it, then have that meeting then, cause I can pick up on the second meeting.
I can make it after five o'clock.
On the thirteenth?
Twenty-first.
Oh, on the twenty-first.
Anyone got a, a motion, got an idea?
Yeah, but it'd be the twenty-first during the daytime.
And the, when's the other one, what'd you say?
We hadn't decided that one, we'll have to come back.
Now, you do realize Dave and myself won't be there. So you have two. Well, that's great, Mr. McIntyre, I appreciate that, but having it after five o'clock, how it's been going for the past two years has been fine for everyone. I'm sorry it hasn't been for you.
Okay, I've got a motion out there, that'd be the daytime on the twenty-first.
I can do the twenty-first, that's-
What time?
Yeah, as I was gonna say, at time.
What time does it suit y'all, eight-thirty in the morning? Nine, begin at nine?
Will it be just, uh, will it be a four-hour thing, will it be a half a day?
I would think so.
As we want it to be, huh?
No, I, I think that you start to wear down after a while.
Right.
And, and so I, I think, uh, probably a half-day would be, you know, kinda like one of our evening meetings.
Well, I would second that motion from nine to twelve.
Okay, nine to twelve, is it?
On the twenty-first?
On the twenty-first.
Nine to twelve upstairs?
Uh-huh.
Okay. All right, let's, uh-
We have to vote on that.
All right. That's, that's on the twenty-first of May, which is a Wednesday, from nine until twelve.
That's fine.
Okay. Of course, we gotta, we, as we all do, taking into consideration the staff too and the people that are, that have jobs to do. All right, what's the other one? There's a, well, you wanna vote on that one? All right, all in favor of that one, raise your hand. Okay, opposed? Okay. Got it, Jenny? That's the twenty-first and-
The only other day left is the sixteenth. Unless we do something when our Councilman Pierceall's not here. No, he's not.
What's the day you're gonna be here, Todd?
Seventeenth.
Uh, besides the week, I'm gonna be gone, it looks like between, uh, Councilman Curlin and Kimball. Everything else is Xed out. Between Councilman Curlin and Kimball, we've got the partial first week, the second week.
Or if Kimball, you don't go to the, uh-
The whole last week.
What takes the COG, though?
Oh, the fourteenth, I, I, I said I'd be, you know, if we, if we had representation, uh, uh, from the city, be happy to do that. Or the thirteenth, either day, if, yeah, it's-
See, any, any, anywhere that whole week, Todd, since he's gonna be in Washington, so we might as well just go ahead and go for it.
Do it, whatever works for everybody else.
What about the fourteenth, though?
Fourteenth?
Fourteenth.
That's the day after the city council meeting?
No.
No.
No. It's in between the two. Fourteenth on Wednesday.
That'd be fine, we got that wasted in the next one.
What time you want?
We'll have five, five-thirty, you know, that, you know, where we'll have some, some food and start by six.
All right.
And?
Is that a motion? Someone?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make one.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? All right, we've, now, we have those two straight Wednesdays there, five-thirty on the fourteenth of, uh, May and upstairs and, uh, and the twenty-first, nine to twelve upstairs.
Mr. Mayor, what, uh, because we, we, we know at least there, there, uh, Councilman Pierceall and Councilman Gallagher may well miss one of those and it's possible even Councilman Curlin. The staff will set up a time during the day, sometime, eve, day, night, whatever, where we can brief you, get, get up to date, so that the meeting that you missed, you know, we can get all of your input or share with you what we've done, so that we'll, you know, that, that we'll, we'll figure, uh, perhaps we'll, I'll talk to both of you and we'll figure out what, what works best for you so that we can keep the information, uh, for you.
I can even do a webinar if possible or even call in.
That's po, that's possible, we've done that, actually, we've done that before.
What'd you say?
I'm sorry.
Call in?
Yeah, we've-
Yeah. Yeah.
Particularly if there's, if this is not a time where you would take a vote or take any formal action, it's more of a workshop.
If that, if, well, I'll tell you what, we'll do, we'll, uh, do that as, as well, yes.
I, I may be overcalling that evening too, I just have to see what my schedule is in Washington.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and Ed, I would request, um, someone from the staff, uh, speak with Jim Prosser of COG or his designee to get an idea, uh, what the issues are gonna be coming out. But I expect that to be a lengthy meeting, so it would probably be good if we could have our person up to speed on that before I walk in.
Okay, absolutely, thank you.
Is that it, Ed?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, let's, uh, quickly go to, um, city council reports, Ms. Craig.
Uh, I have no report, but I would like to, uh, wish someone a happy birthday, April the sixth. Uh, one of our colleagues up here-
Thought I was gonna get away with it.
Happy birthday ahead of time. And that's my report.
I thought I might slide since it was on the off week this time.
Birthday man? Boy.
Birthday boy, I, I like boy, man. Just two quick things, um, one, I don't know why I thought about a minute ago, but Ed, if, if we could get a, I know Brenda would like to hear this too, a report on the progress of the net program for Scruggs. You know, I tow that road every day and, uh, other than the trees getting trimmed back, I haven't seen much of anything going on. I mean, I know the police are over there too, that's kind of the unseen, that's the, kinda what goes on behind the scenes. But as far as some of the other projects that were presented at that community watch meeting, I'm not seeing any of that. And I know we, some of that was because of the cold weather, but that's kinda why I'd like an update to see what, what has been put off on purpose and what just hasn't been done yet, see if we can get that done. Uh, and then the second thing is the, uh, the Gaston Association of Realtors is having their Housing Expo this Saturday at the conference center, I invite everyone to attend that. If you're gonna buy a house, refinance a house, need your house fixed, need your yard fixed, anything you need with a house, it's, it's happening at the conference center and that's from the hours of ten to four. And you can register to win a big green egg. A big one. Thousand-dollar value.
I appreciate it.
No, it's a grill, the big green egg, the grill. Thousand-dollar grill, so you can register to win it, so, come on by and see us.
You said anything you needed, y'all, y'all help with payments?
Except the pay. Sure, now, there's a couple of realtors that could probably afford that, but I'm not one of them, sorry. That is it, thank you, ma'am.
Jim?
Um, I just have one thing, Your Honor. I would like to request, um, in-kind services. I have, um, schools such as on May tenth, uh, Hunter Hus and Forest View. Rachel, if you wanna handle, uh, hand out that stuff, you can. Rachel and I have been working on this for a while, um, and we reserve time at the pavilion. And what it is, is Hunter Hus is gonna come down, uh, to the pavilion area and they're gonna do some skits and some dancing and some perform, performing for their dramatic arts. Uh, the kids are gonna be there from two to five. And then Forest View is gonna do their, uh, a play, um, at the pavilion from, starting from about seven-thirty to about ten. And it's gonna be The Taming of the Shrew, uh, which is Shakespeare. But however, it's gonna be, uh, the adaptation is gonna be, uh, in southern vernacular. It's not gonna be in Elizabethan English. So it's, Taming of the Shrew is a real comedy and it's a real fun piece. Um, and they just performed it just recently, last week at the school. I think you'll really enjoy it. That's for the tenth, which is a Saturday. And then what we're trying to do is try to get Ashbrook and Hunter Hus, not Hunter Hus, but Highland, they're gonna do a play on the twenty-third. They're only gonna do parts of their skits. Ashbrook's doing Cinderella and Highland, I'm not sure the name of the play that they're doing, but they're only gonna do parts of their skits and it's gonna go from about seven-thirty there to about ten-thirty. And that's gonna be on a Friday night, which is, uh, May twenty-third. The cost, uh, for lighting and all is, let me see. Rachel, um... We're really just using the, um, the lighting, which is, what, five hundred dollars a night, right?
Are you not gonna need sound?
Uh, the sound, we've got it donated, um, that part. Uh, the sound was being donated and-
Who's donating sound?
Uh, one of the churches, uh, Flint Grove, as a matter of fact. And, let's see.
Is there not insurance?
If it's a city-sponsored event, it will fall under-
Okay, so this is a city-sponsored event?
That's-
Right, that's what we're aiming for. We're aiming to only have it two nights, we're, we're thinking three nights, uh, but we're gonna try to move Ashbrook over to the twenty-third. I don't think that's gonna be much of a problem for them to do that. I've been in touch with all the teachers and they're pretty excited about it.
What, what about this on, Jim?
Um, just to create some interest downtown, just to bring some students, um, to really show what the schools can do in terms of doing dramatic arts. And it's pretty much, um, I'm not gonna have the city pay any of these fees. I was willing to put up like two thousand dollars myself and get that donated. Part of it was five hundred dollars for the porta-johns and that's for two evenings, which is a thousand dollars, and five hundred dollars that we spoke about with the lighting, which is another thousand, so it was coming out to two thousand dollars. So, I'm not sure about the-
That's the out-of-pocket cost.
So the total here?
I've broken it down into out-of-pocket costs, which would be actual cash cost. The waived fees and rentals, if it becomes a city-sponsored event, then, um, you all, an ed, you would need to vote to, um-
Like, like tr, the tree, the tree lighting, the city-sponsored event, we don't charge KGB for the tree lighting, yeah. So if it's a city-sponsored event, we do, we waive fees, but it's up, it's up to us as a city.
But now, isn't KGB a department of the city?
Sure.
Okay, okay.
But I mean-
So it is a city department?
Yes, any, correct.
Okay, okay, okay.
So, so the total out-of, out-of-pocket expenses, you're saying from two thousand four hundred to two thousand eight hundred and fifty?
And that's based, um, the only variable there is the lighting. If you decide to go with a smaller, um, lighting system, then that's what's on the three hundred dollar end, the larger system is four fifty. So that's why you've got a range there, everything else is pretty, um, pretty standard cost. Porta-john's gonna run you about five hundred. But the waived fees and rental, uh, is a combination of the pavilion rental and the permit fees that you see listed above.
I see.
And that is a total cost for four performances, so.
Yes? Going back to this, Rachel, but we're, we're looking at, if I'm reading this right, four thousand in in-kind services, correct?
Yes, sir.
Have, have we got?
And that's an estimate that Mr. Wood, that Mr. Wood provided.
Thank you.
I just-
Go ahead, Jim.
Well, that's what I was getting ready to get back to, okay. To do something like this, don't we have the guidelines that it goes into? And there's a guideline or a timeframe?
Ninety days.
Ninety days. Oh.
We've been talking about it for-
My math is not right.
No, we've been talking about it for a while, I just haven't brought it up in this, in this light.
Don't we all have to follow those same guidelines or not?
The guidelines were set up for groups that come to the city.
Right.
City council, if the council wanted to propose something, you, you know, it's our facility. And, you know, from time to time, city council can propose things. We, we get to move around, I mean, we have our guidelines for other organizations. In this case, there is not another organization that really has brought this forward, I believe, is councilman that has actually initiated it. So, uh, you know, if any of the council or mayor initiates something, we, we just, you know, go with what that is. There, we don't apply those specific rules on the outside organizations to the city council here.
Well, I guess my only, to follow up with that, I understand what you're saying, uh, and, but... How do we... How do we keep, how do we pick and choose, uh, if we do this, okay? Which, I, it is probably a very good idea and I could see why the teachers would be so excited about it. But if we do it for one group and then another council person has a, a thought about it and they bring something, how do, how do we prioritize and say, okay, this is, this fits the, the criteria and the guidelines? That's where my, my concern is, is if you do it for one, then you have to do it for everybody. So that's my question to the city manager, how do we discriminate?
Well, council can set up a set of rules for yourselves, for instance, to schedule things or to say, for instance, let's- let's, you know, uh, you know, establish what you feel are good ground rules for new ideas, and about scheduling things, and, and agree with the city mayor and council about how you wanna work that. And you can put whatever parameters you want on yourselves, uh, in terms of how many events you wanna sponsor, uh, do you wanna, and do you wanna do sums in different seasons? And then, you know, uh, as, as a group, decide what the rules are, and if someone has a new idea, you as a city council decide how that new council person should bring that idea to you.
Or should that come before the facilities committee?
It's a, it, it's.
I mean, to set up those guidelines, if that's what this group decides to do.
Facility, facilities and management, 'cause you're really talking about managing your facilities, and, and the, and the, uh, of course, that facility there is one, one of them. It's also down, it's also a center-city issue too, but, but I think management facilities would be good.
Yeah, I mean, that, that wouldn't go to my committee. That would be.
Yeah.
Facilities, I would think. So, not blocking off any roads or. Well, yeah, my question was, was kinda like Brenda's, in that this sounds really nice. I mean, I don't have anything against the program itself, but it's just very sudden, and just at our last budget meeting, we were asked, asking for a report on in-kind services, because this kind of thing was starting to get out of hand, where we were doing in-kind services for every group, and then.
Think we wanted to see the cost, right?
Yeah, of, of total in-kind services, and then all of a sudden, this comes, that's another four thousand dollars in in-kind services. And I haven't even, I mean, not that we should've seen the report yet, because they probably haven't had time to get ready. But, but, you know, we were just talking about how in-kind services were starting to get out of control, because every little group wanted in-kind services downtown, and now Brenda kinda made my point. When and where are we gonna stop what we do in-kind services for? Now, we're saying we're gonna do it for a high school play. You know, any group that comes along, are, are we gonna do in-kind services for? And what kind of in-kind services do we need for a high school play? I mean, do we have to have police security there, or EMT? I mean, I, I don't know. I'm asking, 'cause this is just kinda all very, very sudden.
Yeah, in these three in-kind service areas, uh, with police, anytime we have a big group, I mean, we, that, that, that's a special allocation. Sometimes you can, five officers, four hours, like, eh, depend upon what the function is sometimes. If it's a small, little religious group, maybe there's really not as much of a need for police as some kind of a rock concert. Fire emergency and medical, uh, that's thirteen hundred dollars. Sometimes we're able to just position one of our trucks there. But in case, of course, in case of a fire or something, then they have to go. Cleanup crews, if it's a, if it's a group, sometimes we've even, that group has even done their own, uh, uh, cleanup, and we can direct them to do it. Uh, so, i- it is, and the scale of these things are all over the place, too. You have run for the money. It's a huge thing, and it, it occurs at different times of the day. Uh, this is something completely different, uh, and so, you, you know, the, the, the problem is, you, you do have to have a little flexibility as you see these, and it's purely up to, this is a discretionary thing. You know, like, like the water plant's not, uh, how much chemicals we put in the water plant, you know. It is what it is. This is completely discretionary. If you wanna do things like this, you can do more of them or do less of them. There's a cost. There's, you know, what, but also you bring an activity downtown, so it's purely discretionary.
Walt?
Yeah, I kinda, kinda read my mind on this thought. My, my concern was, number one, um, uh, Councilman Gallagher indicated that there, there have been ongoing discussions of this, indicated for a while. It's first I heard of it, and, and, um, feels like, you know, we just kinda had this discussion like a week or so ago, and that, that this was not brought up at all. I mean, I blindsided by this. I didn't, I had no idea that we were even contemplating having plays at the Rotary Pavilion.
We have it there, so it should be utilized. It'll bring people downtown.
No, I'm talking about utilization. I'm talking about a little bit of proactive communication between the council. I had no idea. I, no, if, if somebody would've came up to me and said, hey, how we doing with that Rotary Pavilion, uh, you know, event we're having there, we had no idea. No idea. I mean, if, there's a difference between utilization and communication, but don't get confused with that, okay? Communication should've been, maybe at the last one, we were discussing in-kind services a week or so ago. Might've been a good time to bring this up, and to have at least a rudimentary, um, layout of what your budgetary issues were. That's what I said.
Rachel and I were just getting the budgetary issues together after our budget meeting that we had upstairs. Uh, it just took us a little time.
You didn't have any idea this was even gonna go on until she got that stuff, and I bought it.
No, no, we knew that.
Right.
We were going.
Exactly.
It was hammering it out, Walt, with the teachers, to find out when they could come. It just took a lot of time.
Understand, but you could've.
Dealing with the, the four different schools.
Went ahead and said, hey, I'm floating this idea out to the teachers, or there's been some interest on the part of Ashbrook and Hunter Huss. I had no idea.
Okay, well, um, I would like to make a motion, um, that we go ahead and approve this. Um, I will make sure that the city does not, you know, I cannot make, I can't do the in-kind services, the four thousand, but I'll make sure the out-of-pocket costs are covered.
Second to the motion? Please excuse me. Motion, Dallas, for like a second. Um.
I will make sure the school, uh, find out and understand that we've said no. Thank you.
No. Your Honor?
Yes.
We're not saying no, Councilman. What we're saying is that this was just, at the eleventh hour, sprung upon us to make all these, you know, all these issues come forth. As Mayor Protem said, we have to look at the issues and make sure we're being somewhat, there's some air of consistency, and I don't think that's too much to ask. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, yes, yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion, um, that we bring something to the Facility Management Subcommittee to look at guidelines and criteria for what council members, you know, need to be doing, so that we don't get in this situation again, that we will have some clear guidelines to be able to move forward with, with, with something like this, 'cause I could see the benefit from this, okay? But here again, I think that we're all kinda looking at these numbers, just coming out of a budget meeting last week. So, I would make a motion that, that we refer something, this to the Facility Management Committee meeting.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
And then, then that way, then we can get, we can get some of this cleared, cleared up before it comes to council.
Might wanna make a comment, if, if, uh, Councilman Gallagher can raise the seventy-three hundred and eighty dollars. Get some sponsors, you could go ahead and do it. You could raise the money yourself.
Well, I was just looking at the, the in-kind services for the four thousand. That's the one I couldn't be, couldn't do, but for my own money, I'd put up to three grand. But I understand the council doesn't wanna do that. Thank you.
Any other, uh, Mr. Kemp?
I'd like to say happy anniversary to my wife, twenty-three years tonight.
Happy anniversary.
Bless her heart.
Happy anniversary, honey. Uh, also, we have, um, Chief, um, just, uh, Mayor Protem, uh, Craig and I attended your Kalia meeting, and how's that going? I don't put you on the spot, but I, you got some good vibes there.
We had outside assessors come in as part of the Kalia process last week. They came in at noon Monday, left noon Thursday. And thank you for attending the community meeting. Everything went very well. We had some issues that we needed to adjust with a little bit of policy issues, but nothing that, uh, we couldn't knock out last week while they were here. We had a, a good lasting interview at the end, that, uh, basically, they're gonna recommend us for accreditation.
Great.
We just gotta go before the commission.
Thank you.
That will be in July.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
And, uh, last thing I have, uh, Cancer Services Faces a Hope is gonna be at Stowe Botanical Garden, uh, on Friday. Thank you very much.
Okay, last night, uh, mayor-manager meeting, Belmont catered, and was host to, Ed and I were there, and it was very productive. And Doug Luckett came from the hospital to talk a while, but it's, it was a very good turnout, very, always a good meeting.
And Mayor, you know, it was interesting, they said nothing but good things about Gastonia, and of the way we were working with utilities. Uh, but.
They sure did.
Yeah. I remember being at some meetings years ago where they weren't always happy with us.
And why should that be interesting except that it's expected?
Saturday morning.
Appreciate it.
Saturday morning, they moved, uh, senior games yearly, uh, that county has sponsored, uh, it was to be at Sims, but with the weather, they went back over to Bradley Center, and, uh, uh, I was over there, I was asked and, and welcomed to, uh.
Did you win anything?
No, I got out of there before they did, but, uh, I, I did, I did tell them, and this, just a tad, about the, uh, the, the names on the wall out there when they go in, D. Jeffers and Frederick, and Nancy, and somebody else.
Three, seventy-seven.
Bought that land from Roland Brad. Okay, anything else? Thank you very much. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn? No, ma'am. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Still daylight. Jim?
I don't, I don't think. Answer to your question? I don't think I've seen a, um.
I'm blind.
Person vote on stuff that was not, that were not appointed. I'm not sure.
Yeah, in the past, what, sometimes what's happened, and in each organization does it differently. Do you remember Jim Long? Who was.